Yeah. I want to disappoint them.
Right. (laughing). Everybody, yeah, everybody goes on again. Okay. Okay. Everybody, please rise. We're gonna salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Nutta. Mayor Samaras?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Ms. Dela. Two absent, five present.
Is it something you said, Ms. Martin?
(laughing) I hope not.
All right. The first part of business tonight is a special hour of business, which is the spotlight in excellence. Tonight is the Middle Sex Partnership for Youth Be a Voice, Not an Echo. This is our favorite time of the night, and I'd like to turn this over to Superintendent.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to have some of our students here this evening with us, as well as Margie Daniels from the Middle Sex Partnership for Youth. I'm gonna turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Desmond to share with you our spotlight tonight.
Thank you. Tonight's spotlight on excellence is around a poster project that the Middle Sex Partnership for Youth had this year, and the focus was "Be a Voice, Not an Echo," which is a quote by Albert Einstein. And we have two students from Lowell Public Schools that were honored through this contest, and I would invite Ms. Daniels up to speak a little bit more about the projects.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here in Lowell, and I really thank the school committee for making time on your busy agenda for us to address you. And I also want to thank Superintendent Durkin, who has been so supportive to Middle Sex Partnerships for Youth through many, many years. We appreciate your work so much. We are a nonprofit organization, and our mission is prevention and intervention in matters of health and safety for youth. And every year, we sponsor a poster project where we invite students to submit original posters for our judges to take a look at. We have a very unbiased group of judges every year that come together. It's formed of superintendents, police chiefs. We have some art teachers. We have guidance counselors, psychologists, school resource officers, and I believe we even had the president of our local bank where we're located in Wakefield. So we have an esteemed group of judges that have no idea who the posters are submitted by or what districts they're from. And we're very happy this year that the Lowell Public Schools had two honorable mentions. We had 144 submissions, so for students from Lowell to have two honorable mentions is really noteworthy. You were the only district in of all that applied for this project that had two winners. So congratulations, and...[387.12][387.12](applause). We have the posters here, so we'll talk about them one at a time, if that's okay, starting with the middle school poster. Oh, and I also want to introduce Tony Parentazzi, who's here with us today. Tony is the president of the Board of Directors, former superintendent of the Somerville Public Schools. Currently, he's the superintendent of the Nahat Public Schools, and he has worked very closely with us for many, many years, and I appreciate him coming up at this joyous occasion. So could we have Mariah come up first?[430.46][430.46](applause). I don't know if you want to say anything about your poster, Mariah?
It's beautiful.
It's beautiful.
You did a great job, Mariah.
Fabulous job. We have a certificate to give you to thank you, and we also have a small gift to show our appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.[465.52][465.52](applause).
Mariah, do you want to just try to tell us what the poster's about? Come on.
(inaudible).
We're gonna make you famous.
Come on, come on, come on, for a second. So, Mariah Frazier, I'm her teacher, Mrs. Ballerini.
Thank you.
And we did the poster, and Mariah had come up. We were talking about using the sign language for the word "voice." And I have to say, this young student sits and is so dedicated to our art. She doesn't move. She'll sit and sit for the whole 52 minutes and just come up with it. And she measured, and she made sure all the colors matched, and she thought about her message, which is a really conscientious young student. She did such a great job. When I was watching her, I was just really proud of her, and I was hoping, you know, because she was working so hard. So it's wonderful for me. Also, I'm so happy for you to be able to win something like that, because she's a great student and a wonderful artist.
Thank you for your work, and Mariah was proud of you. Thank you.[537.79][537.79](applause).
And we have an honorable mention from Lowell High School. We have Emily Rios here. I hope she's here.[552.04][552.04](applause).
Congratulations. We have a certificate for you.
Thank you.
And a gift for you. And would you like to say a few words about your poster?
Sure.
Okay.
So, I don't know if this is all right. My poster was on part of a project where we had to focus on like a certain aspect for graphic design, and for mine, it was limited color, so that's why. It's very selective in its color choice, and I hoped that it made an even deeper impact on the words. Thanks.
Thank you.[580.16][580.16](applause).
Again, congratulations to the winners, and we really want to thank the Lowell Public Schools for their support of Middle Sex Partnerships for Youth through the years, and thank you again for allowing us to come here this evening.
Could we have the two students come up to the, by the podium, to have a picture with the school committee and ourselves and Superintendent and the posters?
I also just wanted to thank Fay O'Leary, the Lowell High School visual arts teacher who is here as well, who the class was, the class that Emily was in, was led by Fay O'Leary.
Can I come in and take a picture?
Sure.
Or actually, no, it'll be right there.
You gonna take it, Billy Joe? Okay. I was gonna take it. (inaudible). Talk about being put on the spot, huh? Oh, my goodness.[672.54][672.54](pause). That's so good.[677.82][677.82](pause).
Hello? I'll write the story for this one.
And if I could add one more piece of information, these winning posters have been blasted out to our list of approximately 9,000 school people, law enforcement, and members of community organizations. In addition, they're up on our website so that many, many people will be able to download them and use them in their classes. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.[741.82][741.82](applause). All right, next, 3.1, the appointment of Janine Durkin, Superintendent of Schools. I need a motion to defer item 3.2, item 5.1, and item 9.2 till the meeting when we have the full school committee present. The move by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Thank you. Next, we have the acceptance, the motion, I need a motion to accept the place and file the minutes of the February 13th, 2019, and the minutes of the special meeting of Lowell School Committee, meeting on February 25th, 2019. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Dakota and seconded by Ms. Martin. Thank you. Next, we have permission to enter. The first is 5.1, approval of contracts. That's been deferred. Permission to enter. Madam Superintendent, any...
Yes, if the committee has any questions relative to it, we can respond.
Move to approve?
Move to approve. By Mr. Doherty, Mr. Hoey first.
I just had one quick comment. I don't have it up on the computer, but I believe the MASC contract is there. It reads 9,500. Thank you very much. I'd just like to make a few comments about that. At first, I was against this proposal, hiring MASC, only because of what I thought happened in the past time we've used them. But with this new guy that presented himself to us, Mr. Kucha, I believe he's the one gonna be in charge from the MASC.
Correct.
I was impressed with the man. I believe it's something I am gonna support, but I think there's a, this figure of 9,500 someday will turn into a little bit more than that. Right now, it's, when you keep it under a certain price like that, we don't have to go out for bids, correct? We don't have to look for the bids, and I know we're in a rush. But the total, will the total be somewhere between like 16 and 17,000? These are numbers I've heard, you know?
No, the contract, the services are actually 9,500. There is a stipulation in the contract for reimbursement of their expenses for things like travel or brochures that can go up to 2,500, but that would be an offset to an expense, not a fee.
Okay. And I just have one last thing, and I'll get off it. I had a problem with it at first, because I believe this gentleman that spoke to us, Mr. Kucha, I believe he could do it for nothing. And he's even said it in his Plan B, that if we didn't want to vote for this, that we could have him still work very hard for us, and I think he would've still come up with a great candidate as a superintendent. But I think spending the money on him at this time, on this outfit, will be, will be good for the city of Lowell. I think they know maybe mistakes that have been made, but what he has presented to me, I'm all for this, and I think we're gonna have nothing but a good search. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Doherty.
Thank you. I was just gonna add, as members, we are a member of the Mass Association of School Committees, so this is kind of like the membership rate. Any other additional fees, my understanding is if we do advertising, that any cost for ads, we will pay the cost for advertising. There's not an add-on that MASC puts above that, but that could bring us several thousand dollars more for the search, just if we did a lot of ads. So that's where there could be some additional money, but it's not at all related to the contract for services.
Any further discussion? Madam Superintendent, anything else?
No, unless anyone has any other questions.
I need a motion to approve. Oh, Ms. Martin, did you ever? Need a motion to approve the permission to enter? Mr. Hoey, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutta? Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Ms. Dela. Five yeas, two absent approved.
Okay, next, we have a memorial for Puth Reskami Sopik, sister of Pan Yoo Sopik, Maury School student. Please back in the chambers.[1032.32][1032.32](pause). Next, we have motions. First motion by Mr. Dela and Mr. Hoey does not need a second move to change the time allowed for speakers from three, and this would be residents who ask to speak before the Lowell School Committee from three minutes to five minutes on all school-related meetings. Mr. Hoey, you wanna speak on that?
Yeah, this was more Dominic's idea. I told him I'd back him, because I believe we have some issues with that. I said if they, I felt like three minutes might not be enough for a lot of people. Dominic said to me, "Well, city council does five minutes." I says, "Yeah, but you could get a lot of people here, and five minutes could be a lot of time," I says, "but how do you feel about four minutes?" And he said, "No, I like five minutes." So I just wanted to see if it's a good idea, and if we have the votes tonight, fine. If not, I don't have a problem. But I just think at this time, we have some real big issues to talk about, and it just shows the public that we do want to hear you. It's just that we can't be here till midnight or 1:00 in the morning every night either. So I do have some concerns, but it was more Dominic's idea, but he's not here. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to? Mr. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't think it's been a problem in terms of staying within the three minutes, and I would be more comfortable just referring it to the policy subcommittee to have them look at before we just, you know, make a decision right now to expand it to five minutes. We do have a lot of different schools, and we can have speakers out for each different school, and I think that three minutes, in general, we have not had a problem with people making their points to the committee in three minutes. So I'm not in support of this. I would be more open to, you know, bringing it up under the auspices of the policy subcommittee to look at, is it really an issue to begin with?
I think that's a good idea, and I think Mr. Nutta is in charge of the policy subcommittee, and he's not here tonight.
Are you making a motion? Is that, you putting that in form of a motion?
Would you be open to a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
I would make a friendly amendment to the motion to send it to the policy subcommittee.
Sounds good.
And, you know, have them come back with a recommendation.
But for the record, we have five minutes on the city council side, and we've had nights when we've had 25 or 30 speakers, and some speak for two minutes, others speak for the five minutes. But as chair, I pretty much, you get criticized for, but I hold up to the time. I might say at the five minute or 4.4 minutes and 40 seconds, you know, please close out. Some people take 30, 40 seconds, but I do not allow it to go six minutes, because you'd lose control. But I think five minutes is more than a reasonable request. I think there are many issues where people come in, they have something worthwhile saying, and I think as a school committee, we should listen. So I'm gonna be on, I want to be on record favoring the five minutes. I think it's the right thing to do. But we've, I'll send it to the policy committee. I'm just, you know, stating my position on this. I mean, it's, it seems cumbersome, but it's the chair that's responsible, and the chair gets criticized for cutting people off, especially people who have something to say and what have you. So we're criticized no matter what. But the thing is, as chair, all the meetings, I do keep everybody to the timetable, and other mayors have done the same thing. But the thing is, I think on the city side, the five minutes has not been a burden, and I don't see it to be a burden here, especially when we're talking, people want to talk about their children, okay? So, Mr. Hoey?
Thank you for that, Mayor, but I think Ms. Doherty's amendment's a good one. Send it to the policy subcommittee so everybody can see it, so I'm fine with that.
All right. Next, we have a motion by Ms. Martin, request the administration prepare a report on the current preschool and kindergarten admission policies and address any potential for offering readiness assessments for students not meeting the established birthday deadline. And just seconded by Ms. Doherty, Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is an issue that I know we've addressed over the course of time, and I think we just need to be able to talk about it every once in a while, just to go through that process, to see if there have been any changes. We set our deadline dates, our birth date dates for enrollment in the Lowell Public Schools, both the preschool and the kindergarten. I think we all recognize that there is a certain, I guess somewhat arbitrariness, that you have to pick a date, and no matter what date you pick, not everyone will be happy. And if you move the date back, you just create more unhappy people earlier in the year. So that's understood. I did have some people approaching me about this and about the possibility of being able to build in some readiness assessments that may give us the opportunity when there are students who present, who are within, you know, a day or so. Is there a way that we'd be able to kind of individually decide on those students? I'm putting it forth, asking the administration for a report, so we can get the administration's kind of take on this. My sense is with our Parent Information Center, it has been extremely high-functioning, particularly in these last few years. I think it's been doing a very, very good job. So, you know, I just, this is in no way knocking that, what I think has been a really good effort in terms of outreach and all that. But just to kind of get a, excuse me, a handle on the research, on what backs up that date that we pick, and if there is any potential for some kind of protocol for those students who may, you know, be kind of outliers in this process. You know, I do believe, I mean, we've already started registration. I'm not asking for this to, you know, be implemented tomorrow, but a thoughtful report that could let us know how we've come to these dates, how we back them up, and if there is indeed any potential that we may be able to implement moving forward. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Hoey?
When my colleague speaks dates, I'm really not sure. I hope she's talking about what I'm thinking about, is, I remember being on the school committee 20 years ago. I brought a motion up to make sure a child had to be five years old by September 1st. And when I brought that issue up, it's a very touchy issue, because some people say, "My children are ready, Mr. Hoey," and don't change that date. I think nowadays, we're more inclusive, obviously, after 20-something years, but I'll never forget the way we used to have it in the city. We were very lucky, we had, in my lifetime, I'll be 65 in October, we've never had a program as good as Head Start. I just, I'm biased toward that program. At that time, they were all four-year-olds, and we, they used to put them into one classroom together, and before the year was out, every one of them would be speaking English. It was amazing, the product that they were pushing out. It was like a feeder team for Pop Warner Football. The students that we were getting year after year was incredible. And then money issues, and we kind of diluted it, and you have to go down to three-year-olds, and people just need help all the way down to two-year-olds. And I think the program got affected. The government has proved to me that they're on their way back, because they recently, when Jean Cranko was in charge, they, they sent Lowell about $5 million to bring that program back the way it was. So to me, anything about this issue is huge. I have one last thing to say. I visited 24 of your 29 schools. I'm not gonna repeat every one of them tonight, but I know the true number. I've seen all your elementary schools. I've seen your preschools, and I felt like bringing a motion up that we should charge everybody 400 or 500 a year to be in our school system. That's how great it is. So anybody that's paying for a private school that doesn't want to be in the Lowell Public Schools, elementary schools, I don't know, I think you're missing out. It's been a great venture, believe me. And I always say to them, on behalf of the whole school committee, we're here to thank you for what you do. But anything about preschool, kindergarten, I don't think you can touch the staff in Lowell, and that's all I have to say on this issue. Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Next, we have reports of the superintendent. The first is the McKinney-Vento report. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, this is just to provide you an update relative to the number of active students who are considered homeless under McKinney-Vento, 825 as of this date. I do have the homeless liaison, Rosa Segura Morales, if you would like her to provide any specific details relative to what those numbers mean.
Madam Doherty?
Thank you. If I could, I just had a couple of questions, and I guess the first question really is about, when I saw the number that last year, as of March 1st, you had, what was it, 982 homeless, which was a 20% increase on the total numbers from last year? And I just wanted an explanation about how that dropped from the 982 to 825, like if you could explain that. I know they, they move around a lot, but...
Yes, thank you so much for asking. So the 825 actively enrolled students are students who are still, like currently enrolled. The additional students that, the discrepancy in terms of the 982 is basically students who've transferred out of the school district.
So that means at one point in this school year, that started in September, we were up to as many as 982 homeless students, which is a 20% increase from last year's numbers?
So, yeah, so basically, that means that we've had, with, since the start of the school year, 982 students come into our schools who have been facing housing instability.
And when they transfer out, does that mean our responsibility for them ends? Because I thought if they move to, let's say they move to a shelter in Lynn, we have to pay to transport them back here. So when does our responsibility for their education end? What triggers that?
So, that's a great question. So, under McKinney-Vento, parents have the right to choose whether or not their child remains in their school of origin. A lot of times, there are a lot of factors to consider, the student's age, the distance, and that's something that Nancy Humphrey and I, the McKinney-Vento family specialist, work with families to really identify what they feel is best suited for their child. They can decide to remain enrolled in Lowell, and we would have to pay 50% of the cost share if, 50% of the transportation, if they're in another, sheltered in another city. So the other school district would be required to pay the other 50%.
In the, sorry, the school district where the shelter is located?
Correct.
Well, I could see how families would want their children to stay in their school of origin. I mean, it's so disruptive. I can't even imagine for a family to lose their housing and also then leave their school and their friends. I mean, there's just so much... I mean, there's just so much stress around that whole issue. And so my last question is, and maybe you don't know this, but what supports do we have in place for those homeless students that are in our schools?
So we have, Nancy Humphrey is really the one who does a lot of the groundwork with our families. But she supports them in, for example, we might have a family who's walking in who just got an eviction notice. So she'll walk them over to CTI to see what supports she can connect them with in the community, in terms of getting them housing. Or she'll direct them to the Department of Transitional Assistance. We also have, we work a lot collaboratively with the school social workers, because oftentimes students who are facing housing instability have a whole slew of other traumatic circumstances that they've been working with and dealing with throughout their lives. So we collaborate with them and really do our best to provide, like, wraparound supports for families.
Mr. DeGorto.
Sorry, I said it was the last question, I have one more. Are there additional funds from the government, either state or federal, that if we say we have, you know, a thousand homeless students, are there additional financial resources that come into our district to help?
So DESI provides a McKinney-Vento grant, which changed a little bit this school year. Previously, the student support grant portion, which we had been getting for several years, after the student limit reached five hundred, we would be eligible for fifty thousand, which we were getting. They sort of redesigned the grant this school year to three different tiers. One tier, which was the student support grant, dropped to thirty thousand dollars. And the second tier, which we initially weren't able to apply for because it required us to have a seven percent or more students in our district who were homeless, DESI was able to drop that number down at the start of the school year. So we applied for that, and we were able to get an additional forty-five thousand dollars. In addition to that, we were also able to apply for emergency impact aid, sort of piggybacking off of last year's students who had come into the district from Puerto Rico. And we still had some students here this school year, so we were able to apply for and obtain thirteen thousand additional dollars.
Mr. DeGorto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is it a safe bet that, that there could be actually ten percent more kids that are homeless that just aren't being reported?
Absolutely. There are, we do our best to...
You think it'd be higher than that?
I'm sorry?
You think it'd be higher than that?
There are, you know, a lot of, sometimes we have families who are hesitant to report because they're not necessarily aware of all of the provisions that they are allowed under McKinney-Vento. And we do our best to get the word out there. And when a school social worker or a school administrator realizes that a student might be facing this, they do reach out to us, and we do an assessment. And moreover, like, if they're coming into Family Resource Center to apply, if they're not coming in, if they don't have any utility bills in their name or a lease agreement, we then also assess whether or not they're homeless. But, I mean, there's always potential for more.
Thank you. Mr. Hoyer.
Yeah, just, I remember a few years back, we had thousands of children and people in hotels all over the place, Burlington, Woburn, everywhere. And Governor Baker has brought that down. I don't have the exact numbers, but he's brought it down almost to single digits, that people don't live in hotels. So all these people that they pushed out of the hotels are now back in cities like Lowell and everywhere else, to have the cities take more of a responsibility for these children. And even though the governor, I think, has done a great job at getting people out of hotel rooms, I think that's what happens. They push them out of there. They really don't have a lot of real estate or rental places to go to. And that's where people live in cars. So it's a real big issue. Thank you for your report on it and everything like that. But I think Lowell is a great city when it comes to trying to find ways to help the homeless. We never stop. I see a lot of people that do a lot of things, and we just gotta keep going, that's all. But thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would just say to this point as well, that for a lot of, a lot of the families who were previously being maintained in the hotels, the reality is, is that they've wanted to stay in the greater Lowell area and haven't been able to. The shelter system, the way it works today, is that it's not necessarily, there are some kind of traditional congregate shelters, obviously, but the bulk of that sheltering is happening in rental units, so that families are placed wherever there is a unit. And there can be a family that may present at, at the DTA office, working with the school department, who've been in Lowell for twenty years, and they can get placed in Holyoke overnight, where they have no connections, no backup systems. And sometimes their, you know, their sending school district can be the only sense of normalcy that they have. So I think for a lot of families, I think it's actually really impressive that it's such a large number, this eight-twenty-five, who are so committed to the, to their educational system here in Lowell and the support system they get here in Lowell, that they are willing to kind of send their children these, sometimes really dramatic distances, so that they can remain connected to this community. But I think for the other, you know, hundred-plus so that are choosing new districts, in a lot of cases, they really are, in the western part of the state, just because, as we all know, housing prices here in this northeastern area are, they're just exorbitant. And for families, it's very difficult certainly to maintain their, their tendencies, or even to find additional tendencies if they have, if they have fallen into the trap of homelessness. Thank you. I'd also say that the school department does a remarkable job in the work that they do with these homeless families. And I will say, from the CTI perspective, we consider it, we're great partners to, and we appreciate all that you do.
Madam Superintendent.
I was gonna say the same thing. But I wanted to thank our homeless liaison, Rosa Segura Morales, and Nancy Humphries, who isn't here this evening. But I think if you could watch them in action, single-handedly take a family and make them feel welcome into the school department, clothes on their backs before they enter that building, and food if they need it, whatever it is that they need. So I think they've done an amazing job over the course of the last three years to not only identify families, but provide that helping hand. So, and our social workers in our schools work in tandem with them, and our community agencies, it's just been a really great support.
Ms. Doherty.
Sorry, can I ask one more question? Have we seen a trend, let's say even the last three years? I mean, I know just from the number, last year, there was a twenty percent increase in the overall amount of homeless kids this year. But in the last three to five years, has the number been going up or going down?
There's been a consistent increase, year after year.
How much of an increase?
I can look for those numbers, but yeah, I can, I can look into our...
I wonder if we could get a follow-up that does, just like a one-page letter?
It's actually, in some instances, doubled over the years, but I do wanna say this, that I think we've done a better job over the last few years of really identifying students and training staff and working with our, our house offices, our school depart, you know, our school teams to identify students. So that's, that's a big piece of it. That helps, the more we identify the students, we can provide the supports that they need. So we were, we were noticing several years back that, that we knew in our gut, we knew that there were many more students that had not been identified. So, you know, literally going door-to-door in the summer months. And we use the grant monies to do that, to provide tutoring. And so we've just done a better job at reporting, but we still know that there probably are, you know, especially at the high school level, more students that don't identify, for a varied, you know, number of reasons. But, so the number has gone up, and I, and, and we're fearful that it might go up further with the cost of housing and everything going up in the last, last year.
Ms. Martin, then Mr. DeGorto.
And I'd just add, that really basically mirrors the trend statewide. Statewide, family homelessness has been on the rise for the last, you know, three to, three to five years. So it's a, what we're seeing in Lowell is reflected across, across the Commonwealth.
Mr. DeGorto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is to the superintendent. When you said people, are we informing school principals and classroom teachers? No, also? I think, 'cause that's important. I think that it's not just the administrators...
So that's the wraparound services that we're talking about, so that, that not only when they come into Family Resource Center or go to, or, or show up at Lowell High School to register, it can't stop there. It's gotta be that communication with the school and getting the information out to support the child and their family.
Because in the, in the visitations that Mr. Hoyer and Mr. Lee and I have been going to the various schools, we have a staff that is so caring for our, our children that, for them to not know would be a travesty. And I believe that knowing helps them be even better than they already are. So I think that's all, that's wonderful. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we're all set with that. Next, we have English learners. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you. I'd ask Ms. Desmond to share with you our EL numbers.
Thank you. This is the annual report on our English language learners in the district. You'll notice that approximately twenty-five percent of our overall population is classified as English learner, three-thousand-six-hundred-forty-eight. And your report breaks down what the languages are that these students have been identified as speaking, and then also the racial makeup. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions, if there are any.
Mr. Hoyer.
As far as EL teachers go, I know we can look at all positions, like speech pathologists or whatever, and say we have a shortage. Nurses, we have a shortage. EL teachers in some schools, I think we have a small shortage of those, correct? Am I right? Thank you. I just wanna know that for the future, so, thank you, that's all.
So depending on what level the students are assessed at, the state guidelines are to provide a certain minimum amount of service time. And we are in need of more EL-certified teachers for that.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty.
Is that dependent on the number of students, too? Like, if you have a certain number of ESL students at an elementary school, are they required to have a certain number of ESL teachers at that school?
So it would be more around the level that the student is assessed at, how many, how much time they need to be instructed. So if there are students at the same level, they could be instructed in small groups. So it's not necessarily per student, but it is dependent on the level, and the, the instruction has to be specific sheltered instruction. So it can't be instruction that's a part of the whole class. It has to be specific.
Ms. DeGorto, do you have? All right, thank you. Next, we have business office update. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. I'd ask Assistant Superintendent Turner to share with you the update for tonight.
The budget, the business office update includes budget issues, projections of high-risk areas, human research, I mean, I'm sorry, human resource officer search update, food service bid, and minimum wage issues. The first thing with the budget, we did request from the city manager to, to ask the city council if they would be willing to assist us with the Telview server that crashed in the McCree, McCreeven, I mean, I'm sorry, the Kriegen Studio. It was a hundred-and-seventeen thousand there. You know, there are budgets inside your packet that show a three-year plan for the Kriegen Studio, and it also shows the age of the equipment. Much of the, the equipment is twenty years older, I mean, twenty years, at least twenty years or more. I'm happy to say that they did approve this a hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-dollar purchase for the server, which is great news, considering we already had a hundred-and-eight thousand. They contribute toward two of our remaining salaries each year. That was already built into our budget, so we could not use those funds to purchase this on our own. So I'm happy to say they did say yes. That's very fortunate, because previous year approval of the equipment that goes into the van was purchased this past summer. It would have been useless without having this broadcast in, this broadcast server. So I'm happy to say they did say yes. Any questions?
Ms. Doherty.
That is fantastic news. So I'm assuming that money came out of the PEG funds. So do you know off the top of your head what has been this, how much the PEG money the city has given us over the last couple of years? I know we had about a hun, was it a hundred-and-eight thousand this year that we built into the current budget, which covered two salaries at the TV studio, right? It went towards that.
It contributed, yes.
It contributed to that. Was that about the same as the year before? You don't know the history?
I know that the van was approved last year, but they didn't get around to spending it. So that's why we spent it this past summer, so it seems like it was spent in this fiscal year, although it was approved in a previous year. We did get a hundred-and-eight thousand last year toward those two salaries and a hundred-and-eight this year. I don't know of any additional spending, other than this approved, one-hundred-and-seventeen.
Thank you.
Mr. DeGorto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we have to clarify a little bit about what's going on in, in the, the classroom that's going on, that they aren't specifically affected by the not having access to that server, that there's teaching going on, 'cause I think there was a big consideration that our kids were losing out on in terms of that. But it's really having access to broadcasting all of these events that take place in the school. So that, that's what this is about. And I, I wanna make sure that people know that we have a great teacher who's doing great work with her kids, still teaching every day. So that's, that's not, we're not shortchanging, and so I wanna make sure that people know that. Thank you.
The next item is an update on the projections. As I've indicated with all of our budget updates, the budget decisions we made were risky, but we had no choice. So each time, I wanna have you go through this with me, so that there's, you know, that you'll understand the fluctuations in all of these numbers and how we may be unconcerned one time and very concerned the next. So with the projections, I have three listed, but I would ask that I can add a fourth and just give you a quick update on the bad bills. I will prepare a report for the next meeting, so that you have a formal, you know, document. But a sick leave buyback update, we had thirty-four retirees with a payout of six-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand at the last meeting, with twenty-five on the books that hadn't been paid out yet. That was going to cost us eight-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand. That's one-point-five million. So that's four-hundred-thousand dollars that we're looking at in the whole. So we have, we went from seven-hundred-thousand up to the one-point-one. We're currently looking at one-point-five million. Again, what we can do when we face this later in the spring is we could, you know, some people might elect to do half this fiscal year and half the following, but if not, we'll have to do a payout in July and have it hit the following fiscal year.
Mr. DeGorto.
Thank you. Is this a possibility that it could be a third, a third, a third? Like, over a three-year span? If, if there's, like, I don't know, the breakpoint of, like, say, fifty thousand dollars or something, make it, make it a, a, a third, a third, a third, maybe? Is that doable, or is that something that...
I don't believe the contract language allows for that. I do know that they're allowed to defer, defer their own payment to minimize their tax impact, but it would still be a check cut from us, and then it would go into their 403B. I haven't heard of the, the third, third, and third, but one way or the other, even if we defer it till, until July first, we'll have to.
So have you had many that have agreed to, say, splitting it?
Not yet. Many of them are still getting, going through the whole process, so they haven't decided on how to get the payment yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Nope. The next one was transportation. Since the last presented data on two-sixth, on February sixth, we've had an increase of fifteen homeless students. Since I prepared this report last week, we have ten additional homeless students. One fi, I mean, two fires can increase our numbers by ten. So I had fifteen in the report, but since the last report, add ten to that. So twenty-five, a twenty-five student increase in homeless. There was a twenty student increase to in-district special ed transportation, and an increase to eight out-of-district. The next item, the, the next projection that impacts our budget is the out-of-district tuition. There's no impact right now, but one... There's no impact right now, but one I do want to share each time so you can watch the fluctuations. We did have two student savings by having fiscal responsibility transferred to other districts. So if you have a homeless student here and the mother gets an apartment in Drakeett, then the fiscal responsibility transfers. So we had a savings of two, but at the same time, it was offset by two students that were in district moving to an out-of-district day school. So no impact to that at this time. The fourth item, as I just indicated, I will give you a thorough report next time, the bad bills. I'm still working with the CFO on that so that I can share a report with you after I speak with him. What I did is I did submit to the CFO a full list of approximately $255,000 of bills. I made sure to include bills that we had already paid that were still, we still need their approval for it because it's the law, Chapter 44, Section 64, states that we need city council approval to use current appropriate and current money to pay last year's bills. So even though a couple slipped through over the summer, I still wanted to share that with the city council. I also, the law states that no bill or payroll shall be approved for payment without the city council. So I made sure to include payroll thing, payroll contract language items like course reimbursements or Article 16 payments. Although they are payroll, I wanted to be as transparent as possible and put it on this sheet so that we can build credibility and they decide from there. The CFO was going to research those ambiguous areas that we weren't sure where they fell, were they relevant into this law or not. But at this time, I don't know what we're going to do. I'll share that with you at the next meeting once I speak to the city CFO. Any questions on the projections?
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Anna. Just trying to get some clarification around this number. The $255,000 in bad bills, right, that's what's remaining in bad bills? Because we had other bills that rolled over from the previous fiscal year that we paid, right? And, and so that was a separate total from this? Because I thought we had money we owed the food service, like three months of, was that over a million dollars or something?
So the 255 is the general fund, that's our budget. The 100, the 1.4 million that you're referring to with the food service, those were bills that were held because the revolving account no longer had cash, but that's not part of this. We, that, that was paid as soon as the, you know, we got cash in the accounts in July. The $255,000 that I put on that spreadsheet, again, it included things like the Article 16 payments that were, that was supposed to hit last year. If you can recall, there was a comment about the school department having a surplus, and we all, we were shocked by that because of course we don't have a surplus when there's bad bills still trickling in. Back in the fall, I had emailed the city auditor and the city CFO asking if we could use that $80,000 to help offset these bad bills. At that time, they informed me that we have to go through the free cash certification process, and then I could request the money. So what I did is I sent a memo to the city CFO listing $255,000 of bills. And again, that includes bills that I have paid already, but that, we're not supposed to pay it. We're not supposed to pay it without that. So I want to make sure that we get that approval, so we're abiding by that law. And also, it includes the payroll and unpaid bills. Hopefully, we can come up with an agreement and maybe they can give the $80,000. I'm not sure. I don't know. I just, we can only ask, so.
Mr. Hoi?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Through you, Mayor, to Ms. Turner, this would be a good time for you to vent if you wanted to vent on anything that was said at the city council meeting last night. I just want you to know this. I, I didn't like what I heard coming off some of our city councillors, but I, I did hear something come out of our city manager a few times, and she was talking very highly about you and Ms. Durkin. So I think we have a city manager that's going to work with you. I don't think we had that in the past. I don't think they wanted to work with the last CFO. But I believe they're going to help you work in your direction. But I would recommend that you go home and find a replay of the city council meeting and watch it. Where I told you not to, now I would tell you to go watch it. And I think it would help you see where this city's headed. That's all. Thank you.
Well, I would normally do that, but you know what I think? I'll err on, let me just put it like this. I'd rather not watch it because I'm sure that whatever they may have said, it's because they didn't understand what was going on. I'm sure after we have the, you know, I prepare a packet and they can see it in front of them, I'm sure they'll change their mind.
I'm very proud of you, but earlier you said to me, oh, I wish, you know, I said, don't watch it. I did tell you not to watch it.
Yeah.
But you're coming in after a tough time, that's all. And I think you're doing fine. Don't worry about what the city councillors say. Let us worry about that. But I think they were wrong, and we'll go, that's enough. I said enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
So the next section is hu, human resources. We did send out the required reduction in force letters that we have to do during the budget season. Those were mailed by the Attorney Hall. And the chief human resource officer position has been posted at schoolspring.com. And the recruitment firm Leap Network has 10 additional areas that he's going to post these positions. And they're listed in your packet, the LinkedIn Human Resource Group, Twitter, Facebook Human Resource Group, New England Human Resource Association, Society of Human Resource Management, indeed.com, Greater Boston Wine and Dine Human Resource Networking Group, multicultural diverse professional organizations with chapters en masse, Massachusetts Area Meetup.com for human resource groups, and the personal networking and recruitment of passive, currently working HR professionals. So he'll reach out to people that are currently working and weren't, they weren't even looking, but he'll try to recruit them. Any questions on that one? And the next is miscellaneous. As you know, we did a food service bid. It was due on February 25th. We had three, three people show up to the mandatory pre-bid conference, one bid, and that was, I can say it today because I wasn't allowed to put it in here, but it was Aramac. Today, we received notice from the chief procurement officer in the city after going through all of their evaluation criteria, that now we can approve this bid and move ahead. So next time, I'll bring their whole, the, the proposal with me. And then the next item is minimum wage increase. The state law increased the minimum wage from $11 to $12 an hour. We are exempt as municipal employees, but we're asking that you do approve this $11 to $12 an hour increase. There are 107 man-hours that, that would be affected by that weekly. That's $100 a week, $107, and you would make these employees go from $11 to $12, and we would stay consistent with the state law despite the fact that we're exempt. So we're asking for your approval on that.
Mr. DeCorto, then Mr. Hoi?
Are you looking for a motion to have, to have that happen now? Can I make that so that, make that motion?
It's later on in the agenda.
It's later on in the agenda.
Oh, it's later on, okay.
It is, okay.
Hoi?
Thank you, Mayor. That's, that's why I never voted for Amerac. I didn't vote for their last contract, and I probably won't vote for them again. It's pretty bad when we have to be looking for money for someone that's only making $11 an hour. To me, the kitchen staff that we have working in the city and the hours that they don't want to give them, it's a shame. They are the lowest-paid people we have, no doubt about it. Paraprofessionals are right there next to them. That's a real shame. Pay inequity, we have to look at. So I'll support this motion to give them any type of raise we can give them. When you're making $11 an hour in, in this world, and you're out there landscaping or anything, that's, that's really, that's a poor thing to happen. So I appreciate your concerns about the kitchen workers, and I'll support that motion, Andy. I'll give them a second on that.
Okay. All set? Anything else?
No, sorry, no.
You're all set. Thank you. Next, we have a report on the portrait of Governor Benjamin Butler.
Yes, thank you. This is in response to Mr. Mayor's request for the...
That was representative, the city councillors that made that motion.
The city councillors' request for Lowell High School Social Studies Department to work with the Lowell Historic Board and to craft a fitting testimonial to Benjamin Butler. So here this evening with us is the head of school, Marion Bastide, and also a department chair, Robert Delosa, and he can share with you, if you wish, the presentation.
Mr. Delosa?
I'd like to hear a history expert, without a doubt. I want to know more about Benjamin Butler before I vote on him. So I'd appreciate you.
Okay. That's fine. So, excuse me?
I said it just depends on which part of the country you're from and perceive Benjamin Butler.
I won't mention how much of my family is actually south of the Mason-Dixon line. So the essential issue that was raised on the 200th anniversary of the birth of Benjamin Butler, which we celebrated in a joint exercise between Lowell High School, UML, the Lowell Historical Society, and also the National Park, was an exercise in reclaiming Benjamin Butler's reputation, which we were surprised to find that the label that we have on the portrait here contains elements of what is known as the Confederate narrative about Benjamin Butler, which is not surprising that he would be seen negatively inasmuch as he saved Washington, DC from being encircled by Confederate forces, which would have ended the war rather quickly. He came up with the formulation, the legal formulation, that allowed Abraham Lincoln to okay the de facto freeing of slaves. Lincoln had had to stop this when John Fremont especially had declared slaves to be freed under Union control, which would have violated Supreme Court, Supreme Court decisions, and also antagonized the, the slave states that still remained in the Union. Ben Butler came up with a formulation that allowed the freeing of slaves to happen de facto and also shifted the tide of the rationale for the war on the northern side from keeping the Union together to freeing the slaves. So he's a direct impetus to the Emancipation Proclamation. He appointed the first Irish-American and African-American judges when he was governor. He was institutional in bringing the first woman into the executive in Massachusetts. He was a major force in the House of Representatives and was one of the House managers who oversaw the impeachment of Andrew Johnson. And he also authored some of the most prominent civil rights bills during Reconstruction and was a radical Reconstructionist. So those things are all important for us to know. The other thing is that he grew up in a boarding house. His mother ran one of them. He was a graduate, as much as there were graduates in the early 1830s of Lowell High School. And in his autobiography, he said that Lowell High School gave him everything that he needed to be successful for the rest of his life. And he went, he went from being a, a poor, young, New Hampshire lad who came down to Lowell to being one of the most prominent, successful, wealthy, and influential Llewellyns that we've had. So this is the label that will go up. "One of the great success stories and colorful figures to come out of Lowell, Benjamin Franklin Butler was born in New Hampshire and moved to Lowell as a youth, where his widowed mother found employment running a boarding house. Butler's experience in that environment influenced his subsequent work in politics. He was one of the first graduates of Lowell High School and later graduated from Colby College. He practiced law in Lowell, supporting progressive causes that include labor rights and civil rights for minorities and women. Butler's greatest and most controversial actions came as a general in the Civil War. He was instrumental in ensuring that Washington, DC was not encircled by rebel forces in 1861. He was one of the first major generals appointed during the war. At Fort Monroe, Virginia, he devised a legal strategy for freeing slaves who crossed Union lines by calling them contraband of war. That formulation succeeded. Tens of thousands of slaves crossed Union lines to freedom. This led to the abolition of slavery becoming a formal goal of the war for the Union side. However, Butler was also heavy-handed in his military governorship of occupied New Orleans, 1862. This, along with other aspects of his Civil War service, created a Confederate campaign of vilification that lasts to the present day with epithets like 'Ben the Beast' Butler. Butler went on to serve four terms in Congress and was prominent in the drafting of Reconstruction civil rights legislation. In 1883, Butler became governor of Massachusetts. He initiated the quote-unquote 'long walk' that governors in the Commonwealth take upon leaving office. He ran unsuccessfully for president of the United States in 1884. By the end of his life, he had risen from poverty to become one of the most wealthy and prominent Llewellyns of his time." So I will just note that that conforms to length and style considerations for the labels, which I went through with the administrator, the head of the Historic Board, and whom I thank. And also that we have a longer form, and we're putting materials on the website of the Social Studies Department that are coming out of this work that we did with especially Professor Bob Perant, Dick Howe, and members of the family from Ben Butler and the Hildreth families.
Good job, thorough job. Very good. Mr. DeCorto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. He, he's buried in the Hildreth Cemetery, which I understand is owned by Drakeett. Is that correct?
It's owned by Drakeett?
The Hildreth Cemetery, I understand, is owned by Drakeett.
But there, there are two parts. There is the public part, and then there is the family's private part. And so, that came out wrong. And so that part is, is still owned by the family. It's open once a year. There's some talk that it'll be open twice a year. There's actually a statuary in that part of the family. There's a fairly famous statue that, that marks Ben Butler's grave.
Because I grew up just around the corner from...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's quite something. So that was part of the weekend, by the way, was, it rained, but it was still something.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? As I said, very good job. Thank you.
Next, out of business, healthy shenanigans. Want to explain that to me?
Just a little bit of fun. So actually, there is some seriousness behind these shenanigans. The Health and Wellness Committee for the Lowell School Department has a multi-tiered model of looking at how we provide health to our students, both mental, physical, all, all of the facets of it. But we also, for the last few years, as we've been convening, felt that we've, we've not provided, you know, some healthy avenues for our staff. So there has been an ongoing group of our administrators and our teachers and our powers and our principals district-wide over the years who have engaged in what they call shenanigans. And it's a way of them building camaraderie between schools and, and getting to know one another off, off of school grounds and having fun. So Matt Stahl, the principal of the Wang School, who kind of oversees these shenanigans, agreed to help us with this initiative to launch something healthy for staff. And that, together with Sharon Legasi from Aramac, who provided all the food, the healthy food for the kickoff and all the prizes for those, those who participated, I, I thank them because it really was quite a success. There were 13 schools that participated. Over six weeks, 850 pounds were lost. 279 people joined in in the step competition. There were 66,93765 steps, which is a total of 29,000 miles had with our staff. So it was a great launch of something healthy that built some camaraderie and a little bit of healthy competition amongst our staff. Special thanks to Heather Green from the Daly School, who... who did the interactive spreadsheet that everybody could log into.
Questions? Thank you. Next, we have requested additional information. Madam Superintendent?
Before I move on, I'm going to be in trouble if I don't say that it was a hoot had by all. And those are the words of Mr. Stahl. So, yes.
Yes, Ms. Doherty?
I just want to add, I think it's a great idea, and I'd love to see it filtered down with the children, too. Now, I know everybody can't get those Fitbits and measure their steps, but there's math involved in the steps and to just kind of do these whole-school shenanigan healthy things, but it's great. It's a great story, and I'm very impressed. 29,000 miles in two months. That's so much, and 850 pounds. But I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
So, on to the next. This was a request for additional information from School Committee Man Hoey relative to his motion around 51As. So, you can see that we provided you with the data from last year for a small amount of time when we were just starting to collect that data and then this year through January. The mobile crisis evals, the crisis evals that involved ambulances, the crisis evals that involved a parent saying they wanted to take their child directly to the ER, 51As filed, and those students who, those evals resulted in hospitalizations.
Mr. Hoey?
Thank you for the report, but I did get one thing out of it. There's definitely been an increase in those issues, so thank you for that. I don't want to know the children's names, but I think it's important for us to know a breakdown of what schools have these certain issues. I think it would help us to find out if we need more social workers or more psychiatrists. But it's a big issue. There's no doubt in my mind. It's something that has to be looked at. It's part of mental health issues. But again, I didn't get a lot out of that report because I think people, we should know, we don't have to know who it is, but what was the issue? Now, you know, I know one poor child lost two parents in the same year. We have him in our system. Two of them died on the kids. So, those type of issues are what we're looking at there. So, a breakdown a little bit, I think, helps us when we know what schools. Let's say one school has a large number of these 51As. We have to focus why. Why are they only in that school? And that's why I don't get that out of this information, but I do want to thank you because I've seen the big increase. Thank you very much.
Madam Superintendent?
I think I had shared last time that we have to be really cautious with providing even school-specific data because that school-specific data, somebody in that school, either they know who the 51A was filed on. It becomes public when we start to present it in that way. But I can say to you that in looking at the data, it's not just one school. It's all of our schools. Maybe some of our schools have a little higher number, but it is a need. Mental health is a serious concern in all of our schools.
You all set, Ms. Doherty?
I'd like one more thing, but I'll wait for Ms. Doherty. The thing I want to know is, the reason why I want to know certain schools are, because sometimes, again, we have 29 schools. I'll tell you all about them some other time. I don't believe we have a lot of schools. We might have one or two that could be what I consider a hostile work environment. And if a staff member or more staff members out of a particular school are being, they can be written up for 51As, too. And that's my concern. You've got to be very careful with this issue because, I mean, I've worked in those type of places that we get blamed for a 51A, and it's not a great feeling. And teachers and social workers, I believe, are working under a lot of stress when it comes dealing with these type of children. So, what I want to do is make sure, like exit interviews and everything, that this school committee, I think we've been working very hard on these issues, that we're going to make our work environments in Lowell the best. And I think we're there. I think we're just one step away. So, I have no more to say. Thank you very much.
Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. My question is really with the term, what does a mobile crisis evaluation mean as opposed to a crisis evaluation? I mean, I know there's one that's an ER by parents or ambulance. What is just mobile crisis?
Thank you for asking that. The mobile crisis is when they come to us. So, Leahy would come to us. The challenge with that is, it's a wonderful concept, but it's limited staff-wise in their ability to respond to the schools in the time that we need them to respond. So, when we have a student who's in really high crisis, the mobile crisis is not necessarily the best means. But we are, we work very, very closely with Leahy, and we've been, actually, I just had a conversation with our safety coordinator today around some of the other structures that they're trying to put in place to support us more. So, it's actually the clinicians coming into the school to do the eval.
All set for the discussion? Mr. Hoey?
Last thing is, can we find out who pays for all the ambulance trips that we have? Is it the city or the schools? Do we know? I'm not sure.
We don't, we don't pay for the transportation. I believe it's on the families to pay.
Really? Wow. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next, report on motions.
Yes, this is your regular report on motions. If anyone has any questions relative to our assessment of where they're at, don't hesitate.
I would like since the, that first one, number one, I would like to withdraw that motion.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next, enrollment figures.
And these are your...
Connie, I mean. I just had one quick question, and I think it was sent to all of the committee regarding the Promise Act that we had, that was listed on this. My understanding is that that's already been completed, that our, we voted on it in our support, and that that would have been forwarded to our delegation. Okay. So, if we could check on that, that would be great. But having taken that action, I think it's important that we let someone know that we've taken that action. Thank you.
Next, enrollment.
Yes.
On what Connie just said, the Promise Act, was that the, I think it came from maybe Senator Kennedy or someone like that? Mayor, do you know? He has been. So, didn't we already do that?
We voted to offer our support for it and that we're strongly in favor of changing the foundation formula. That's what it's about. So, I know we took that vote and asked to send a letter or, you know, whatever official notification to the delegation that the Lowell School Committee supports this effort and wants to help in any way we can.
Okay. Thanks.
I think we did. I'll verify. And if we didn't, we'll make sure we...
Lingering on the list. I thought we had done it, too, so, but just to be sure.
So, did I hear that correctly? Were we included in the letter that the City Council sent to support that?
Yes.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
We had the motion to do that. It all went through. Thank you. All right. Enrollment figures?
Third time's a charm. These are your regular enrollment figures, if anyone has any questions.
All right. Need a motion to accept these reports of the superintendent, 8.1 through 8.8, as a report of progress. Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Dakota. All in favor? Thank you. Then we have home education. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, there are requests for parents seeking permission to home-educate their children. Three requests.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Doherty? Got motion to approve?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Hoey. All in favor? Roll call, I'm sorry.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Natta?
Mayor Samaris?
Yes. Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mr. Lay. Five yeas, two absent, approved.
All right. Next, we have the revised fiscal 19/20 recommended budget calendar. Need a motion to approve the 19/20 revised recommended budget. Motion to accept. Mr. Hoey, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Natta?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mr. Lay. Five yeas, two absent, approved.
Next, we have budget transfer. Motion to approve the budget transfer of $41,974.85. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Hoey, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Natta?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mr. Lay. Five yeas, two absent, approved.
Okay. Mr. Dakota, this is the only motion. The minimum wage increase for cafeteria workers. I need a, I need a motion to approve the minimum wage increase for cafe workers. Motion by Mr. Hoey, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Natta?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mr. Lay. Five yeas, two absent, approved.
Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse, I just have one question.
Sure.
I was on the negotiating team, and on these visits, some of the powers asked me, "We approved the $250 increase for them." I told them I'd ask you about it to see if you could look into it. It was above and beyond what they had for what, like the UTL got and what everybody else got. We gave them a special check for $250. And I just want to see if they got paid that.
I did see that it was approved, and it is in the contract language. I'll find out if it has been paid already or if it was incorporated into the mid-year increase or year-end.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Next, a vote to accept the grant award of $1,000 award to the Lowell STEM Club. I need a motion to accept by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Natta?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mr. Lay. Five yeas, two absent, approved.
Next, we have Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative. Is there a problem? Yes. Yes.
I just wanted to thank the Greater Lowell Community Foundation for providing that generous grant of $1,000 to help fund our STEM clubs and to thank Martha Kohn, our coordinator for pre-K to 12 science and social studies, for securing that donation. It's going to help fund our after-school program, STEM programming for our students across the district.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Hoey?
Through you, Mayor, to Ms. Desmond. Was that $1,000, was it, did that come after the science fair that they had at the high school? Is that where that was donated from?
Yes, it helps. So, our STEM clubs, our after-school clubs at the middle school and high school, and those clubs help our students to, with a STEM advisor, prepare for the science fair. So, this helps fund those programs and results in helping to support our kids, our students with their projects.
And I just confused with the name. Isn't that the same outfit that donated like a half a million dollars in scholarships to Lowell High last year? Is it J? Trying to think of the guy's name. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. All set. All right. Next, we have the Commonwealth Preschool. Need a motion? Motion?
We didn't, we didn't vote on it.
No. We had the motion. I need a roll call.
Okay.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. You did.
Yeah. I did it, but you told me that we didn't. I was challenged. I won. Okay. Next is Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative. I need a motion to approve and post the data analysis job description by, what's the date? Madam Superintendent? Any date?
This is going to be in the survey.
Motion to approve it and post the data analysis job description. And you have by, that has question marks, is it?
Oh, now.
Just wanted to set that one, now, at this point. Okay. I need a motion to accept, to approve by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Ms. Martin? Mr. Natta?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mr. Lay. Four yeas, three absent, approved.
Do we, excuse me, Your Honor, do we want to get a brief explanation about what this is? I think it's a great grant opportunity that we earn because we do a great job of partnering. So, I think it's worth just a little overview.
So, it is a continuation grant to help continue that expansion of the collaboration in our, with the Lowell Public Schools and our community agencies who provide early education to our children. So, this is the extension of the PEG, the Preschool Expansion Grant, and this particular grant is affording us $274,167 for this fiscal year, to close out this fiscal year. So, that's amazing. It'll provide professional development and a lot of supports for, and then we'll also be eligible for a substantial, I think it's around 600, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses this evening. I forgot them, so I'm having a hard time reading. But it is a substantial amount of money for the following school year as well.
All set? Okay. We have a roll call, right?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have motion to approve and post the Assistant Early Childhood Coordinator's Job Description. Any discussion on this? Mr. Hoey?
Move to approve.
Move to approve, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Natta?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
I feel alone up here. Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mr. Lay. Four yeas, three absent, approved.
The three of you are not allowed to move. Next, a move to approve an MOU for the Assistant Early Childhood Coordinator. Any, Madam Superintendent, any?
So, that's also, the Assistant Early Childhood Coordinator would also be funded out of those funds that I just mentioned.
Okay. Any motion to accept by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Natta?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mr. Lay. Four yeas, three absent, approved.
Next, I need a motion to take and approve both convention and conference requests. Mr. Hoey and seconded by Mr. Dakota. Thank you.
Mayor, could I just say something about that, please? Lowell, thank you very much. Lowell High varsity basketball team, their trip to New York. The basketball team, they're going to the Baseball Hall of Fame? I just, is that a misprint? Because I would think we're sending a, okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, that's a typo. It's the baseball team is going to a trip to New York. So, the baseball team's going to the Baseball Hall of Fame in Cooperstown, New York, May 11 through the 12.
No problem. I had a feeling that was a misprint. And I just, I just want to say that I'm, as the chairperson of the Athletic Subcommittee, I'm going to make a prediction that our baseball team's going to win a state title this year. That's how good I think they are. A lot of our teams, the track team, basketball team, girls' basketball team, came back strong this year. Hockey's always doing good. So, I'm glad we're sending the baseball team and not the basketball team. That's all. So, thank you very much.
Good observation. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Jacoto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Ms. Lay. Five yeas, two absent, approved.
Next, UTL donated sick days. The Members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby donate 14 sick days to Patricia Tig, Daly School paraprofessional. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Hoey, seconded by Mr. Jacoto. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Jacoto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Ms. Lay. Five yeas, two absent, approved.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Jacoto, seconded by Ms. Doherty.
I wanted to talk about these focus groups.
Oh.
Appointed personal privilege?
That's within the rules.
We have focus groups on the superintendent search that are meeting next week, and I just wanted to point out some of those dates. I think the big ones for the community to be aware of, I mean, they're all going to be on the website, right? But on March 12th at 7:30 at the Stock Close the School Library, that will be one for the general public, 7:30 at night. But the big one, I think, is Wednesday, March 13th, beginning at 5:30, Your Voice Matters, Community Forum, and there's going to be a panel of experts speaking to the community about what we should be looking for in our next superintendent, and how to really evaluate, you know, this very critical role for the district. So I would welcome, I think we should welcome all the community members who might be interested, and those of us I plan on attending, if I, you know, I think we should be there.
So we did get that out to all of our staff today. We will be posting that on the website tomorrow, as well as sending a connected message out to all of our families, so that, and directing them to the website and letting them know specifically the focus groups that they can participate in.
Through you, I just wanted to add one more thing. I think that there's, it's great that there's a lot of different times and days and locations, but I think if we could highlight, the big one being that meeting on Wednesday, the 13th, at the Butler School, where there's going to be a forum of experts talking to us about the role and, I mean, I think it's almost like there's too many options, but to kind of highlight that this one, we're going to have this expert panel that would be a recommendation. Thank you.
What we tried to do was to provide them in different areas of the city at different times, just in case families worked in the evening and didn't have, that they'd be able to give voice and be able to share their thoughts. That's great, thank you.
Mayor? If you don't mind, I want to add tomorrow as the K Stock Close the Knowledge Bowl at the Butler School, 5:30. I just figured I'd throw that in, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Needs overthrow, but we, actually, maybe we should add this to what the City Council has at the end, announcements or any of that, so we take things out of, I think we have a request from the Union? Go ahead.
Can I speak?
Sure.
I'm really sorry to interrupt, Miki Dumont, but I have another highlight that I think you all, some of you may be aware of it. I brought some flyers for each of you. One of them is a two-sided flyer that tells all about the Fund Our Future campaign, and on the opposite side is a very descriptive explanation of the Promise Act and the Cherish